All right, good afternoon. I'd like to call the December 5th Greenville City Council Workshop to order. Mayor PJ Connolly, I'll be presiding over the workshop today. First, I'd like to call our city clerk for the roll call. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Connolly?
Here.
Mayor President Glover?
Here.
Councilmember Daniels?
Present.
Councilmember Blackburn?
Present.
Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Councilmember Robinson?
Here, always more with less.
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
All right, Mayor Connolly, you have a form.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Madam Manager, any recommended changes?
No changes this evening.
All right, so a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay.
All right, motion to make by Councilmember Bell, same by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
No.
All right, we'll move on to new business. Madam Rule, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Items number one and two will be information on public art. And I'll call forward Holly Garia with Emerge to talk about both items, one and two. The first item is regarding public art, murals on Magnolia Art Center, which is facing Perkins Baseball Field. Holly?
Okay, so this is presently the way the back of Magnolia Art Center looks. You can see that these windows face the Perkins Athletic Complex where many baseballs fly towards this building.
They might be aiming for it.
Yeah, and so when my boys were playing baseball, I said, "You know what? I think we can do something about this." So, the Emerge Gallery Youth Public Arts Project, which is a youth program for children who come to Emerge every other Saturday during the day, half the day they do music lessons with our African-American music series, and half the day they do public art. So we thought this would be a great project for them. And they have started on concepts. So these will be the general concepts which we hope we can gain your approval for that would have a baseball theme. So again, these are the basic concepts. Our goal is, after approval, that the children will work with the instructor and paint on new exterior grade wooden boards that will go on to those windows. So we're very excited. The Civic Arts Committee has approved these concepts, and also we made sure that the current president of Magnolia Art Center has also looked at these and approved the concepts. So we're very excited about it. Any questions?
I believe that all of the pictures of batters, we changed pictures to illustrations of pitchers.
And specifically left-handed.
Left-handed pitchers, if at all possible.
Maybe with some likeness of someone. Howard.
We wouldn't encourage people to play that.
Pitching is really what the game's all about.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, I love this, I love the ideas, I love the sketches. Will all the sketches be simple, or will they have more color added to them, or are they going to be?
Definitely have more color. We wanted to bring the concepts to you, and then the children will make it very, very colorful.
Love that. And then they're going to be on boards which we put over the windows that have been crashed out. Is that going to have any effect on, you know, the interior lighting, or anything from the interior viewpoint?
No, there are already boards, these are already boards on there. So as Robin Ashley, the current president of Magnolia Art Center, said, "This would be great."
It almost looks like a black box then.
Yes, so that's their main foyer and waiting area.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
You'll bring this back to the council. Do you know when?
If we get approval of the concepts, then the kids will, we can bring a report once the children have completed them. Absolutely.
Is there a motion that's needed?
For the city council meeting in January.
Okay.
It'll be on the agenda. All right. The second item. Am I going to go on? Yes. Okay. This is for the Down East Sculpture Exhibition. This is an annual exhibition. It's actually a competition, and so every year we'll be coming back to you with five new sculptures that are rotated at the end of February. This is a national competition. We had over eighty entries from all across the country. The juror reduces the items to acceptable sculptures, outdoor sculptures, and then those sculptures first come to the city for our five placements here in the city of Greenville. And then we also have sculptures in front of the Greenville Museum of Art, ECU, the town of Farmville, town of Aden, and town of Winterville. So we will be having fifteen sculptures throughout the county. And these are the recommendations that have been approved by the Civic Arts Committee for the five rotating sculptures here in the city of Greenville. The first is called Sphere by Hannah Gibran, and this will be going in front of Chico's at the Reed and Cotench intersection. This has also received Best in Show, so typically the Best in Show location is right there, in the heart of our city.
Don't we have a piece by Hannah Gibran?
Yes, he gets Best in Show often.
Yeah, I know that name.
Yes, and, well, and his piece is currently in front of Chico's, but also the Tenth Street Gateway Sculptures.
Yes.
Those are Hannah Gibran, and then also in front of the Transportation Center. So he is just an internationally known sculptor, and also the head of our sculpture department in the School of Art and Design at ECU. So we're very lucky to be able to celebrate him. The next is a sculpture by Jeffrey Repko. This is called Springer One, and this is recommended to be at the Town Common placement, right near the parking lot. Next is a sculpture called Orbit by Matt Amonte, and this is recommended to be at the Harding Street access on the Greenway. And you might recognize this artist, Jonathan Bowling, our very own. This is called Horse with Chain Bridle, and this is recommended to be at the Stansel Drive access. And this is a piece by Gengelucci called Ribbon Arch Two, and this is recommended to be at the Elm Street access of the Greenway. However, since this is a national competition, many times we have to have alternate choices. So last year we did this with the council because some might have already, because we have to wait thirty days to get their approval back from the council, some of these sculptors have also entered other shows, and sometimes they're not available by the time we get to January. So I always have alternate choices. And so these are our three alternate choices. Adolescent Maze by Mary Beck Kingston, Dreamcatcher by Christian Happel, and Watchman by David Skora. And also locations, we do have another location at the Summit Street access, and I was just speaking with Don Octagon, there is a chance that one of these sculptures may, instead of going on the Elm Street access, go back to that Summit Street access. I just wanted to let you know. If that changes, we'll let you know.
The Town Common was, that's the bear now, right?
It is actually a tank with a little tank. It's called Father and Son.
And I've become quite fond of that sculpture. I was going to ask, what happens to these sculptures that, you know, we've been looking at and maybe fond of, do they go off and have their life somewhere else?
So unless they're purchased by the entity, they go on, they go back to the artist. And these public artists, they're doing this all around the country. So usually they come, bring their trailer, pick it up, and they're on their way to another show. But we're always very excited when we are able to purchase it, just like the Hart in front of City Hall, that was a purchase through a donation.
Well, please give my regards to the committee because of the art that they selected is absolutely phenomenal, such caliber.
We're so excited, and this is a wonderful way to have large-scale sculpture within our city at a very small price tag. You know, some of these sculptures are close to fifty thousand dollars if we were to purchase them. So we're really excited to bring it on a smaller price tag for our community to enjoy.
Have you looked into some locations north of the river that we could have some art?
So that is on the Civic Arts Committee's agenda to hopefully be able to add other locations, and we hope next year, perhaps with our contract for services, that we would be able to add some locations. And I will take your question back to them.
How about Greenville, right?
Thank you.
How about Greenville Terrace?
Yeah.
But I knew with the planes over there, that would be a really good spot.
Okay, that'd be great.
And they'll see this again in January.
Yes, it will come back. And we have talked about Wildwood, so we are very open to that in our next contract year. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to item number three. Thank you, Holly.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number three comes to us from a request from the Historic Preservation Commission. We'll call up Stacy Pitchford, who will talk to us about historic signage in the College View neighborhood. And I'll turn it over to Stacy. Stacy?
All right. Engineering was tasked with reviewing the historic signage in the College View neighborhood. Historic signage is not automatically installed. If requested, the city will install yellow historic district emblems with the neighborhood name to our street name sign, as shown in that top picture, and that's a close-up of it. At this time, we do not charge for the fabrication and installation of the historic district emblem, and the cost of the emblem is seven dollars and seventy cents. And we also do not charge for stolen or damaged signs, because they are on our street name signs, and we are required to replace those as they go missing. The current procedure for our neighborhood entrance signs are these oval signs that you see. They are available to all neighborhoods, so they are not designated just for historic. They are purchased by the neighborhood at a cost of eighty dollars apiece, and they are not uniform in color, so the neighborhood gets to determine the color that they want. And this table just shows what we currently have installed, the neighborhoods where we have them installed, and the colors that they have chosen. These signs are purchased by the neighborhood, and they are responsible for purchasing new signs when they are stolen or damaged, although they are not required to replace them if they are stolen or damaged. As far as the College View neighborhood, the current inventory and condition, there are thirty-eight street name signs in the College View neighborhood. Four of those signs need to be upgraded to our new nine-inch sign standard with the historic emblem. There are three neighborhood entrance signs, the oval signs. If requested, three additional oval signs could be added, and we're recommending at Fourth and Lewis, Second and Eastern, and Fifth and Eastern. So those are three additional signs, would cost two hundred and forty dollars to be paid for by the neighborhood per our current procedure. And this is just a map that shows, the red is where we currently have the oval signs, and the blue is where we are proposing, and that covers the main entrances into the College View neighborhood. The proposed signage and cost, the HPC is requesting the city consider a new design for historic designation signage to be placed on all thirty-eight street name signs. So this would replace the yellow historic emblem, and this is just an example that HPC gave to us. Due to the significant increase in cost, and that's comparing the seven dollars and seventy cents for our current emblem to around a hundred and forty dollars for these new signs, staff recommends the neighborhood be responsible for the purchase of these signs. The cost for the College View neighborhood is approximately fifty-three hundred dollars to put them on all thirty-eight street name signs, and the neighborhood would also be responsible for replacement as signs are stolen or damaged. And just to note that the final design would be, have to be approved by staff to ensure that they are able to be mounted to our existing street name sign assembly. The HPC is also requesting the city consider a new design for neighborhood entrance signs, and these would replace the oval signs. And these would be standalone signs on their own pole, so it would require the installation of a new pole within the city right-of-way, so staff would have to determine the locations of these signs based on available right-of-way. And this is a comparison of the signage, so our current oval sign is eighty dollars apiece, and we currently do not charge for installation because they are just going on top of our existing street name signs. The historic entrance signs, the proposed, would cost about nine hundred and twenty-five dollars apiece, and we would charge installation for those because they are requiring a new pole installation. So the cost for the College View neighborhood to upgrade to the standalone sign would be approximately fifty-five hundred dollars, and consistent with current practice, staff recommends the neighborhood pay for the signage, and the neighborhood would also be responsible if they are damaged or stolen. And that's it. So, city council, just receive information and provide direction.
Councilmember Daniels?
When you speak neighborhood, you're talking about the neighborhood associations, correct?
Yes.
Do all the neighbors, neighborhoods over there have associations, if you know?
I don't know.
Councilwoman Wagner?
I was going to say, I could respond to that question, at least in part, if it would be helpful about neighborhood associations in the area. There's the Tarver University Neighborhood Association, and then, like down Tenth Street, there's College Court Cod Hill.
I'm saying that those vicinity, because you wouldn't want...
Are those established associations?
Right.
Are they...
Tru- Tru- yes.
So is it throughout the historic, because you wouldn't want signs to be in one area and not in another.
Right. I guess, again, I can't speak for Tru, and I just know they're a university, they're a neighborhood association there, and I think that they are the only one, the predominant one. You getting some out of here?
Yes.
Now, I do think, just for clarity, I think the request from the Historic Preservation Commission was to put the signage around the historic district?
College View.
Which may or may not be represent, which should be represented by Tru, but Tru is larger than the College View historic district.
That's a good clarification.
Yeah, that's right, okay.
Can I share some, just general thoughts? First of all, I love this idea, absolutely love this idea. I love the idea, especially when you look at the town of Hillsborough, how nice that sign looks. I just, you know, I would like to see this not only in College View, but I would like to see this throughout our city. I think Councilmember Glover was asking about, or did I, I may have...
No.
It seems like I've heard you asking, maybe I'm just making...
Well, I was talking about it, because I think that West Greenville is a historic district, and it was built before. A lot of these places will feel downtown and everywhere, so, because that actually quite moved out and went that way, and that's that way.
I'd love to see, first of all, in these historic districts, we could start there. But throughout our city, every neighborhood, I think, deserves at least the oval signs and a neighborhood entrance. And I also believe that the city should pay for it, because this is a lot of money to ask neighborhoods, and some neighborhoods have more socioeconomic resources than other neighborhoods. And I think if we want our city to really look good uniformly, and not impose that burden on our citizens, that we should take responsibility for that. And I think it should be throughout our city, and again, we can start at our two historic districts, because they are historic, and they do, sort of by virtue of what they are, merit this special attention. But I say we make our way throughout the city, to all neighborhoods, in whatever ways is equitable to provide at minimum the ovals, and then a nice neighborhood entrance that says, "You are now entering," I don't know, whatever neighborhood of...
Brook Valley.
Brook Valley needs a sign, they don't have a sign. So I think this is a lovely idea, and I think this is a good starting point for something we can and should do throughout our city, and that the city should pay for.
I would, the only thing I would say, I would caution that. I think we went through, when we did the change to 264 to 587, wasn't like the cost estimate just to replace the signage, just for that, like seven million dollars or something like that?
Right.
I want to say that that was about the amount that they paid, but that's to change all the signage along that entire route, but like, you're also talking about entire city to change all the signage would be extremely expensive, and a lot of man-hours that you'd have to put in, too.
To your point, could we start with the two historic districts?
Well, I think we actually have one historic, one historic district, which is in College View. West Greenville is not a historic district, so more work would be need to be done to create the historic district within, in West Greenville.
I thought it, okay, I'm mistaken, I thought it already was a historic district. Well, then, let's do that.
Maybe they just started when they moved everybody out, moved them on the west side, but it is historic.
Okay. It's absolute, I mean, I would say let's do that.
I don't think it should be throughout the city. I think some things should stand out, and I don't think that will stand out if it's everywhere. I think it's been a historic district, that should be its own thing, and I agree with the payment. And the fifty-five hundred dollars, what did that cover?
That was...
I think there are two components of this, so Stacy, do you want to remind them, but would each one go back to the slides?
So the...
Okay.
The proposed neighborhood signage was about fifty-three hundred dollars, and that was the one that would go on top of every street name sign. So there's thirty-eight street name signs in that neighborhood, so that would be thirty-eight of the neighborhood signs. So that was the fifty-three hundred, and then the fifty-five hundred would be the neighborhood entrance signs, and that's if we were to put six around the College View neighborhood, which is what we think.
So about eleven thousand, close to.
And you got a lot of...
And the staff members here, is the, isn't the, I guess it's a window symbol, isn't that used in the historic district in places other than on the street signs?
It's used on the, excuse me, at some of the houses, they do have a plaque that has lots of...
And some of the street signs, too.
I guess, I like the idea of, you know, some of the standalone entrance signs, right, so that it's clear when you're coming into the, I guess I don't understand the, you know, what's the abandoning of the current historic, historic symbol for the, and if there was, if it was proposed that there would be a new historic symbol? I guess that was the piece, so can you back up until we get that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're not taking that off the street name signs, not having that at all, is what we...
Was that, I remember that being proposed.
They gave...
That was within the proposal, and the resolution.
They asked for different signs, I remember that. But I thought that was for the circle up top.
It was.
Maybe I was...
It was.
That's the sticker. Yeah, so are those, those are just stickers, right? Why is, and that was a hundred and forty dollars?
We have to replace every sign.
That's not a sticker, that was a sign.
Okay, but like...
What we have is currently a sticker.
Okay, but that's what, so that, that sign right there, where would that go?
On top, it would replace the oval.
And would we just have no emblem on the sign-in, and then this would, this would replace it?
Yes.
So that's the difference?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense. I was going to say, my gosh.
I know that HPC was, I know that that was what they proposed, and they're here. Could you want to, let me ask one?
I think we don't normally take comment, public comment during a workshop. I think Lisa...
I'm asking for public comments, I'm asking, can we ask the HPC members that are here if that was the intent of their request?
Or their liaison.
Or their liaison, the staff members.
I have a question, though.
Lisa and Stacy have both looked at the recommendations from the Historic Preservation Commission.
So how long has it been in place that the neighborhood associations pay, and have they paid in the past?
Since we started doing the oval signs, we have always charged the neighborhood. It's been about ten years at least.
A lot longer than that, yeah.
So all of those that were listed on that chart that she had, that have the oval signs, those, all of those neighborhoods have paid for their oval signs?
Generally speaking, with grants received from, with community developments, grants provided by the city, they usually apply for three, four hundred dollars from, through the neighborhood advisory board, or the community appearance committee, and you have to say, "Hey, our proposal for our neighborhood education is to," you know, sometimes it's to improve their, their, the landscaping on their main interest, but sometimes it's to add these signs. And over the course of, you know, a decade or two, multiple neighborhoods have won those grants, and they used it, as I understand it, to pay for these, to pay for this as a neighborhood improvement piece, which worked great. I mean, that's, so I guess, I have to ask that, so is your understanding that the neighborhood advisory board, specifically the Historic Preservation Commission, has requested that the city abandon the existing, because there's a member of the HPC here who's suggesting that's not what their request was?
We love that logo, we can't get rid of that logo. Whatever else happens to that little window, we can't get rid of that logo. We put it too many places. That's not what we...
Yeah, that was my impression.
I think they were looking at the oval on top of the...
That was the change, right?
Correct.
But there's instead of the oval.
Okay, so go back to, to the slide.
Which one?
No, keep going. The slide with the, okay, keep going, one more, one more. So this slide is misleading, or does not accurately correct, compare what the HPC is requesting of us. They like this, the symbol on the left, and in fact, it is used in areas far beyond the signs themselves. And where did the issue, where did the thing on the right come from? And what was it, is that the finial that was proposed?
That's supposed to replace the oval.
Okay, so that was...
Do you have that resolution, Cynthia?
The other sign, freestanding sign for the whole, was the neighborhood entrance sign. That's what ovals are. So if that's to replace the ovals, then the freestanding sign would not be needed.
Yeah.
But something like that could be used as a freestanding sign, or I know there was another model in there.
There was another model.
The one from Hillsborough, if there was something, so I think, my understanding is that was what was requested, not to abandon, I'm going to call it, the existing, the window, the pleated window style, or whatever. Removing that from the street signs, I don't think was what was proposed, but I think what was proposed was adding some sort of larger, more evocative sign at the entrance to the neighborhood.
I wonder.
In something resembling that sign, the blue's the sign on the right.
I think, so if that is the case, if the yellow emblem stays, and the blue sign is
to be used as an entrance where the ovals currently are, then you would take the cost of the blue sign, which was eighty dollars, is that correct?
Yeah.
Of the blue one, I can't remember.
I think it'd be a lot more when you put it on a big sign.
Well, that forty for the small.
It was a hundred and forty for the blue one, I think.
Yeah, but that was when it was considered a finial, not when it was a standalone.
No, it's a hundred and forty dollars for the blue sign.
For the blue sign. And you take it times six, right? Because we have, we would recommend six ovals, there's six entrances. So you would take the one forty times six, that's what it would cost. The big increase in cost was the other option that they gave us, which we took as the, what they were requesting to be their neighborhood entrance, which was on a separate pole. That's where the cost goes up so drastically, so that is nine twenty-five, I believe.
I do want to say that I do have the estimate, and they were pricing forty of those. So their intent was to put those on every street name sign.
In place of the oval.
Well, we don't put the ovals on every street name sign. Those are our entrance signs. So to me, what it sounds like, they want to keep the yellow, but also add the blue, and then in place of the ovals, put in the standalone signs, is the way I'm understanding it, and looking at the estimates that I was given, that's what it is.
I think that, and we're talking, when we're talking about standalone, we're talking about the...
Yes, so those would replace the ovals, yes.
Yeah, I think that's a wonderful...
I guess, as a way forward, I think that we should ask staff to consult with HPC about exactly what they had in mind, and then give us a quote based on, you know, what specifically that was, because I think there's been some errors in translation here.
They sent out emails, and they sent out pictures.
Yeah, and that's what I think.
And we even had a discussion at the council meeting.
That's what I remember, and it was, doesn't seem to have translated to a clear understanding of what we're proposing, is my concern. Because I've never seen any, that I understood there to be abandonment of the existing logo.
Some of the local landmark signs all over town, we can't get rid of the logo.
All right.
So, just in summary, if we continue to provide the yellow sticker, we were already providing that free of charge. So that doesn't change the estimates that we have provided in the presentation.
I think that the city should also bear the cost for the standalone signs.
So like six of them, right?
Yeah. And I'd like to add, even though it's sort of tangential, it's certainly corollary that we look at a historic, the historic district in West Greenville and making sure that signage in West Greenville is, reflects these same standards and these same, you know, the same vision.
I just think we have to be, I mean, I know I'm the liaison, but I think we have to be very careful about changing the policy of how we do things. Because once we do it for one, we're gonna have to do it for everybody. And, I mean, I can just think of some neighborhoods in West Greenville alone, or my district, that needed some changes, that they, the neighborhood associations were responsible for doing that. I would love to do that, but I think we just have to be careful with the changes that we make to whatever our policies already are.
I certainly defer to you as the liaison and to Mayor Proton Glover, since I think it's largely her district. I think if it's something that would be appropriate, I would support it. But I'd certainly defer to you.
And Tony, I know that there are, I've seen books that lay out, you know, a Skinnerville, a Higgs, you know, multiple historic, you know, named historic locations.
Right. And the differences, those are honorary designations on the National Register.
But they are, in fact, they have footprints on the National Register.
Yes.
So we don't have to make up where it is.
No, sir.
If somebody says, we're talking about Skinnerville, then you can go to the National Register, get a footprint of what Skinnerville is.
That's right.
Or Higgs, or, there's a couple other ones over there. So they're not zoning overlays that the, like, that the city has laid over, like is, that we have over in College View. But they are, in fact, recognized, the research has been done, we are acknowledged to be historic and significant. So what Councilman Glover is, Councilwoman Glover, Mayor Proton Glover is saying is like, yeah, we have historic districts over here, is literally true.
Correct.
Okay. So I think that if you were to look at this from the standpoint of, you know, should our historic districts, whether they're zoning overlays or not, be recognized in signage, then I think you would be talking about more than just College View. You'd be talking about multiple other footprints in and around West Greenville.
Yeah. That was, I mean, it had to be historic, because there are people who lived in West Greenville that lived to be 100 and some years old. So the area, it says that it's historic, because the people live 100 years, so, in West Greenville. And I would argue with historic pres, not you guys, with the historic, people who make the decisions about these that have the registry. Because that's how you knock out black folks out of your city. You don't have anything to identify the neighborhood, to make the neighborhood look good or presentable. Because let's face it, the traffic that comes from the medical school goes straight down Fifth Street. And so they see all the areas.
I think, in the eyes of the federal government, in the eyes of the National Register, there is no, and I'm, I think I've got it right, somebody can tell me if I got it wrong, there is no real difference between College View, Higgs, Skinnerville, the Uptown Historic District. What's, the city of Greenville has chosen to place a zone, a local zoning overlay at College View, which restricts what people can do there to the guidelines which the Historic Preservation Commission, but from the standpoint of Washington, when it looks down and says, hey, y'all got five historic districts down there, they have no, I don't think they're making any distinction between the historic districts in West Greenville and historic districts in College View. So I don't know that we have to, you know, if what we wanted to do was to recognize in signage the historic areas within the city using the National Register as a guide, I don't think we, I think we could easily do that. I don't think we're obligated to just look at our own zoning overlay and say that's the only thing we think is historic.
So, do we have clear direction as far as what, what signage?
Okay, I have one more question. Do we know that there's money with the neighborhood association, that they can apply for grants?
Is there any grant funding?
Yeah, that might have been several years ago.
Okay.
Second of all...
So this might, just to clarify, so that...
This is an action of the council. We will have to find this money within the general fund. Because we have no grant funds to, for these, for this. And that's how, so...
So I would say, first and foremost, you've got to figure out signage, what everybody, what the neighborhood, so what's the Historic Preservation Commission wants as far as it... Then we need to make a decision if we want to move forward. And then also, I think there needs to be a policy that's established. So, moving forward, because every neighborhood, once you open it up, every neighborhood's gonna be able to put some signage. And so there needs to be some type of policy that's established.
So, so Mayor, can I just restate that? So what you are looking for is some staff recommendations related to signage, is that what you're looking for?
Well, no, I think that you need to get clarification, because, you know, it seems like staff has been working on stuff that they didn't need to work on, because I don't think there was clarification on it, right? And so, for Lisa and Stacy.
Okay, so clarification on what is being requested.
Going in circles.
Okay, so clarification on what is being requested. And the, I think there were three points, not two?
Well, first and foremost, they need to figure that out. If they figure out what the HPC wants, Historic Preservation Commission, it's Monday. And then we've got to figure out after that if the council wants to move forward with it. And then, finally, I think that we need to talk about having a policy if they do move forward. Because before you do it, you need to make sure there's a policy in place. So there's an understanding that this is the process, and this is how you can have it done. Because I'm telling you, other neighborhoods are gonna probably want it done. And, you know, if you're setting a precedent that the city's gonna pay for it, that can be very, very expensive over time.
May I add, I appreciate Councilmember Smiley sort of dissecting the National Register of historic places. I wonder if that could be a starting point, because again, we have historic places in West Greenville that don't really have the special attention. And again, I defer to the liaison and to the representative, but I...
When you say a starting point, because I think we should be, we should focus on where we are, because there's already confusion, it sounds like, and not to add more. But to bring that on, I agree, we should bring that on later. But I think right now, we need to focus on what was the request, how we're gonna implement that request, and how will it get paid for.
Sounds good.
All right, we good?
Nope.
Huh? Not good?
Good as it can be.
Don't walk home.
That's your concern.
Huh? Walk home. And then, there's this acting up. Oh, did you want to say something else, ma'am?
No.
Act him up? Do you want to ride home? I think that's what you're trying to say.
No, you know, when you look at it, the people were in a historic district before they were moved to West Greenville.
I agree.
That was part of the West Greenville.
Because I thought Cherry View was historic.
Yeah. And I thought I saw signs that said Skinnerville and Higgs. I think there are some signs over there. And I'd love to see more. But we, one step at a time, you're right.
All right, we good? Everybody good now?
We're good.
All right, let's move on to item number four.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number four is a follow-up request from Councilmember Blackburn regarding some discussion on social districts. Assistant City Attorney Donald Phillips has that presentation.
So we're gonna be talking about an update regarding some of the requests for social districts here in the city. The first question, and one of the first things that was, staff was asked to look at, was does council want to move forward with combining the Uptown Social District and the Dickinson Avenue Social District into one? And that's actually something that council will need to look at. And then, number two, does council want to move forward with requiring permittees to use compostable cups? If yes to either of these questions, it will require an amendment to the ordinance and for adoption by council. Combining the social districts, items to evaluate, the safety of persons crossing Reed Circle is one of the considerations. Number two, cost to replace social district signs, for example, the materials to have the signs placed for the existing signage was $1,968.80 for printing of those signs. And then, city staff resources was 48 work hours. Three city employees worked two full days installing the existing signs. Requiring the use of compostable cups, yes, this is permissible under Chapter 18B, the stat, 18B 300.1 that allows the existence of social districts. It's, the statute allows restriction of using glass containers, plus all of the others that are listed in the statute, such as the name of the permittee, the logo for the district, et cetera. But it would allow a city to require the addition of a compostable cup by way of its ordinance. So items to evaluate, permittee will be required to purchase compliant cups for participation in the social district. An enforcement mechanism would be, need to be put in place for permittees not utilizing the required cups. So what are the next steps? Staff request items from council regarding each of the requests. Number one, does council want to move forward with combining the social districts into one social district? And number two, does council want to move forward with requiring permittees to use compostable cups?
Can you give that to us, please?
Sure.
I can read now.
Is that it, or no?
Yeah, that's the one. Okay, thank you. I gotta say, for two attorneys putting this together, I'm very impressed with the shortness of the short rest of the slides.
You could tell, it must have been shorter.
Oh, we added a few steps?
So impressed. It was shorter.
But we did have two attorneys working on it. At one point, we talked about, you know, at some point reviewing, combining the social districts, was it this quickly?
I don't think that it's online. I think I just said we need to revisit it later today.
I think I had mentioned something, though, that I wanted to see how well this goes before we make any modifications to it. I do think I remember saying that at one of the meetings.
How do we think it's going?
It just started, didn't it?
In October. Well, we actually, if I can say, Mayor, we actually, as we were talking about this, we had staff get together and just talk a little bit about how the social districts are going. What we're finding is, is that there's not a huge amount of people that are using the social districts, that there are not a lot of people walking around the streets. Some of the issues we worried about were related to litter. We're not finding that there's a lot of litter, because there aren't a lot of people walking around. I think, Donald, I think we share the number of, I don't know if that's in there, the number of businesses that have participated. Though I could send that out.
Yes, ma'am.
There's just a few. I can tell you the businesses that are participating. Let me find that email, hold on.
The non-permittee businesses. I think there is maybe one in Dickinson Avenue, and maybe three in the Uptown Social District. I think that's correct.
I think it's important, too, that it, I mean, it's been lovely fall, but you know how spring is. Spring is, is it just such a different season. We may see a change in that, a change in the activity. I think that the reason that I like the idea of one social district is because if we're gonna say this is a good idea, then let's embrace it. I think that it's something that is really forward-looking of our community. And I do think that adults should be able to cross the street, even if they do have a drink in their hand. We've got the nice, you know, arts emblem, you know, there on Reed, where it's just a, it seems to me that if that's the only concern. But to the mayor's point, if we want to just see how this is going, to me, it's an idea, that if this is a good idea, then let's fully embrace it. And that was the reason that I thought it would be good to go ahead and look at it, and look at making it one district.
Well, there was also some discussion about when we did revisit this, that we would expand the, not just the footprint, but also the hours. And I don't know that, you know, we may be there, I'm not saying, but I mean, so I think that when we decide to, you know, take the next step, I think it should be maybe bigger, maybe a broader, larger step than just connecting the districts. And I don't know that we're ready to do that yet, but that was my memory. In fact, I was a little surprised that we failed to fully encompass the desires of the, from the hour standpoint, of what the people who are initiating the request. So when we, if we're gonna go back and revise this, I'd like us to see us, you know, revisit, okay, if we got this wrong, you know, did we get it wrong on the footprint? And we get it wrong in the hours, what's the right answer? So I don't know that we're ready, my sense is that I don't know that we're ready to take that step yet. But I'm happy to be guiding.
I guess I just see this as, this is something that, I guess I saw this, it's more of a permanent kind of structure, that we had it set up, except for this one piece, let's get them into one district.
I think that there's a lot, there's a number of parts people would like to do.
I can say with a personal observation, Christmas parade the other night, there were, I'd say, several dozen people that had stopped in Uptown Bruin and picked up a glass of wine, or a cup of wine, or a cup of beer. And I even heard a couple times, like, it's the best city council ever, thank you for doing that.
That was your wife, right?
She's on one of those, you know. They said, you know, I'm really feeling...
Ginger, did you get that?
Really feeling the holiday spirit now that I got my jolly cups. No, I think, like I said from the get-go, that our hours were kind of missing the mark on this. I think, you know, the intent of this, when it was passed in the legislature, was to get people out and about earlier in the day, you know, having a glass of wine, wanting to shop, things of that nature. So I definitely agree that if we're gonna make changes, we should make changes to the hours of it, and move it earlier. I'm not saying move it later, move it earlier. So like shopping sip events and things like that can take place in our downtown. I'm okay personally with making two, or one district, one cohesive district, because, you know, I've heard from private businesses, I'm not gonna mention their names, but they've said, hey, we would love for, you know, businesses from one end of our downtown to be able to come to this end, and vice versa, with their, you know, beers, cocktails, whatever it may be. So I have heard private sector support for that. So that would be my feedback, would just be, you know, I think we should bring the hours earlier in the day, maybe start at noon, noon to 10:00, and then make it one cohesive district.
That's Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
Yeah. That's what I would do.
Five o'clock somewhere.
Yeah, it's always five o'clock somewhere.
Not my house.
As far as the cost, is it a good time to talk about the cuts?
So let's, I mean, I think we probably need to establish first if there's a will of the council to go ahead and create one district. I think that's probably best before we get into another subject.
I have no strong opinion one way or the other on that.
So we gotta review all the signage, though, if we do that. And do we have a safe mode to get people across to the other district? I mean, we're having trouble getting people from one side of the road to the other side when they're sober.
They're not drunk, they're just having legs, Mayor. They'll be walking.
Well, what I'm saying...
There are other options, but we don't want them to...
What I'm saying is, what I'm envisioning is that there needs to be some type of walkway or something that needs to be put in place with like, a rectangular beacon that's flashing or something for them to get from one side to the other. I mean, I would think that it needs to be designated, too, doesn't it?
Right. Well, we have a pedestrian crossing on Reed, at Reed and Dickinson. That's, the normal crosswalk is out there now with pedestrian signals.
I think we gotta have faith in, but if you're an everyday person to be able to cross the street.
I agree.
Come on.
If you've got to change the signage anyway, then if you're gonna change the times, you should do that while, so you only change the signage.
So the signs currently, and I've seen the signs, I guess I haven't read the fine print, do they delineate this, the ends of this street, just to distinguish that it's two separate ones? Is it, there's that level of detail? Okay, I haven't, because I haven't looked at them in that one.
Two separate signs.
Can we use stickers? HPC, they've got the sticker thing a lot, so let's do stickers.
All right, maybe it's your estimate. So, if that's the will of, I mean, does anybody have any reservations with creating one district?
I know, especially, I just think that if we're gonna make changes, we should...
So if that's the will of the council, since we don't make any changes here at the workshop... So, if that's the will of council, since we don't make any changes here at the workshops, that needs to be put on an agenda, a future agenda, in the city council, in an open meeting. I'm not saying that this is not open, but we just, that we just said that, you know, we aren't going to make any, any type of changes in a workshop, because it's not readily available, it's not on TV.
It may require public hearing.
We need to make revised ordinance, so we would have to bring that back to the original change.
Unless there's any objections, I would say that we take Councilmember Smiley's recommendation also, and adjust the hours during that same meeting, so that we're not changing signs for a third time.
Okay, we just need with clarity about what hours to leave the hours to.
I personally would say 11:00 or 12:00, 11:00 AM or 12:00.
We keep going.
I know, it's like, we talked about, they drink in here.
I'm just saying, that's when, that's when the business is open, you know, it's when the majority of our businesses downtown are open, it's 11:00 AM. It's kind of like the Brunchville thing that happened a couple years ago. I'd hate to say, oh, you know, we can do it at 12:00, but not 11:00. I mean, let's just do it when they open, and just cut it off at 10:00 before, you know, it gets too late.
I would more be inclined to support one, but a couple hours, I wouldn't split hairs over. I do think that the latter end is the more important element here, but I just think for the, I guess I remember the old blue laws, you can drink on Sundays until one, so, you know, it's.
It's about your age now.
I am, I'm thinking absolutely right.
My age, too, so cut it out.
I remember on Sundays, you couldn't drink that drink.
That's exactly right. You know the story? They had a lot of stuff.
All right, so do we have any, like, do we have kind of a consensus as far as time? I mean, does anybody have an objection to 11:00? An objection?
Is that Thursday, Friday, and Saturday?
Someone help me, I forgot. Where is the social, where does it start and stop?
Starts down near Subdog's Reed Street, and then goes all the way to Reed again, currently, and then stops, and you get over to Dickinson, that's along Dickinson Avenue. But we're talking about combining all that into one now. So that you don't have the confusion of the two different districts, or people crossing, crossing over, I guess they can, the rules that they have in place currently.
It would include more. And it's going to include those frat houses and sorority houses. Who's going to pick that trash up in the morning? With people already trashed up.
It doesn't include them.
Before they put the trash in. You shouldn't be out there picking it up. They should keep it picked up themselves, because it looks terrible when they have a party, or a rush, or whatever they have. It looks awful. And just one place, but a new place, it's terrible. They keep theirs look bad all the time, every day.
Let's get Mayor for a Tim Glover, and a golf cart, and an air horn.
It's certainly easy for businesses to opt out of this, right? I mean, you don't have to let people into your establishment with an open container.
Hey, we've got a general color sticker for people who don't want, you know, who don't accept the beverages inside their establishment.
All right, so anybody have reservations to 11:00, or to 11:00 AM?
I mean, there's something to be said, if you're going to embrace it, to embrace it fully, you know, so.
There you go, so 11:00 AM to 10:00.
11:00 AM to 10:00, 10:00 PM, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
Okay? You're creating one district.
There was a timer.
We got that established, we're good. So now, we move on to the cups.
And you're going to vote for this?
Me?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm not going to round the board again, to have somebody, you know, to have the person who introduced the legislation vote against it.
I didn't get what I wanted last time.
I understand, but you also didn't tell us that.
This is what I proposed last time.
All right.
Can we also revisit it in six, three months? Whatever we're going to do anyway?
Well, it seems to be pretty easy to get it on the agenda to revisit, so I don't think we have that.
I'm just thinking, if we turn it to 11:00, we find out there's just craziness.
If there's craziness, I think we'll probably be hearing about it.
All right, so let's go to the cups.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, first of all, I wanted to thank Chad Carline for being here. He is the Sustainability Officer at ECU, and if you're familiar with his work, it's really amazing. Not only has it made ECU a very forward-facing campus nationwide, with real national recognition, but it's saved not hundreds, not thousands, but millions of dollars for the university in terms of energy costs, and, you know, other items that Chad and his office have learned how to streamline, and to make just, to really just cut costs while being more sustainable and more environmentally friendly. So, this idea, actually, again, we need to give credit to Chad, is to have cups that will decompose the landfill, because theoretically, we're dealing with a lot of cups here, and you know how they are, those red cups, they just go everywhere, they fly, they end up, and they never go away. If they do make it to a landfill, they're going to be there until the end of time, whereas if you choose a biodegradable cup, a plant-based cup, that does go to the landfill, but it will eventually disintegrate. And it just seems like, not only is it a good thing for the environment, and we really do need to think about our environment, it is, it's a good thing for our city, because it says that Greenville is forward-looking. It says that Greenville is really out there and aware and conscious of the need to be sustainable, and I think it's a really a win-win. Win-win-win, because my understanding is that they're also about the same price as just regular plastic cups. So, I'd love for that to be part of our social districts. And I know we don't have any member of the public to comment, but I would say that Chad's here, and he could possibly comment on this if he, if it were in order.
Maybe we add it to the agenda.
Okay.
When you say they're about the same price, you know, how close is about? By a thousand cups, how much more expensive is it to?
Chad, you want to text me the answer to that, since you're not?
I'd be afraid of just saying out loud, if he knows the answer.
She's calling it.
I have a mic, I know my phone is good, so I can.
Oh, I think you sent an email.
I sent an email.
Yeah, let me see.
Okay, well, you're looking that up. Have there been any outreach to these, to any of these establishments for them to do this voluntarily?
Uptown had them this weekend, like, I was, you know, about.
I'm sorry.
Uptown had them, you know, based off their own will, you know, they wouldn't bother them, that's what they're using.
Okay, good for them.
So, obviously, they couldn't have been hideously much more expensive.
Let's see, Chad, I'm going to look for that email.
I think I saw somewhere where, like, Subdog's responded to a comment on Facebook, that their cups are consistently, like, people are always posting pictures of them, they're dishwasher safe, so, like, students are always posting pictures of them, washing them, and then reusing them at their house, so, I mean, you know, I think.
Dishwasher safe is probably not compost, probably not compostable.
No, and you can't take your cups out of the social district.
But being reused.
But you can't reuse social district cups.
Yeah, I think they use a different cup anyway, I'm just saying, there's a lot of businesses already practicing, you know, for sustainability uses.
Here, buy your cups, let me see. Well, I don't see numbers, but as I remember, they were comparable. In price. Again, it just seems like a win-win-win. It puts our city kind of forward-facing, it's good for the environment, and the cost is the same.
I certainly hope that every business would take every step, you know, that they can, to make sure that they're practicing, you know, sustainability, but I would be extremely against mandating any sort of cup, or any sort of, you know, I own a pizza company, the next thing, what are we going to step in and say that pizza companies have to use, you know, sustainable or compostable cardboard boxes? I mean, it's just, I think that's a slippery slope, mandating, you know, vessels that businesses have to serve their products in.
That's actually not, that's actually kind of a false comparison, but, okay, you're saying it's a slippery slope, and you don't want to regulate. I think we regulate all the time, and I think here's an opportunity to do something really forward-looking. And it looks like, I found it there, $7,600 for 10,000 cups.
And what's the other compare to what?
Chad, do you remember what that compares to?
That's the number that Councilmember Smiley quoted, that someone had recently paid for, 10,000 cups with $7,600. The numbers that I saw were.
I didn't provide anybody a number.
Yeah, he emailed for me, but.
Oh, those are regular cups, okay.
So, those were the regular cups?
I don't believe I did, but I'm sorry, if I did, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't remember having that data at my fingertips at any time. Yep, and I've said that, I, this doesn't seem like something that, you know, when I was elected, people thought I was going to be doing, which is telling them what type of cups to use. It's, it may in fact be better for the environment, it may in fact be a good idea, but if it is, then, you know, you know, why aren't they doing it already, right? I mean, has anybody gone to these businesses and made the argument, hey, you should, it would, you know, you would be, you would be serving your clients, I mean, your customers and your, your community better if you would be using these cups? And maybe they would, right?
We're to inform the council that the city attorney's office is checking with city in North Carolina, and no city is requiring compostable cups in their social districts as far as we go, and we put something out on the list there regarding that.
What does that mean?
No city in North Carolina is requiring compostable cups for their social districts.
Is there any other consumable product in the city that we regulate, the vessel that serves them? And if we're getting catering tonight from a company that's using plastic, then it's just.
So, those that are already using them are doing so because that is what they want?
Right, yeah, if it's part of your business model, and you believe in, you know, sustainable practices, you're going to do that, but we can't mandate that.
I will say that, that there are some, some cities that do have guidelines in place, certainly about styrofoam, and if you go up to the triangle, you just don't see styrofoam in plastic the way. So, you're right in the sense that is, there is some sort of free market determination there, but there are places that, that have, you know, guidelines in place, city guidelines in place.
Where are the triangle businesses?
I'm not saying that the triangle has it in place, I'm saying that some cities do have things in place, for instance, against styrofoam. So, I just, you know, again, I understand.
I know what cities they are.
You know, I do not have all that information. I can certainly get it.
Okay.
I started here, because I want to ride home. No, no, I mean, these are all good questions, and I think just having this conversation is really important, and I think perhaps Councilmember Bell and I have a, perhaps a difference of sort of political philosophy and viewpoint, but I think we could still find some common ground here, where we do a win-win-win for our community. And what that is, I don't know, I don't have that answer. I would love for us to find one, because I think if we could do this, we could have these compostable cups, rather than the, you know, just the plastic cups that are going to be here until the end of time. It would really be a good look for our community, and for our social district.
Well, I think you have to weigh that against the look for our community for, that, you know, when we start, you know, legislating very small pieces of people's lives, I think that has a look to our community as well. And there are many people who, or, you know, I understand that there are many people who would be gratified to see a community do that, but I think there are being many people who would not be gratified to see a community do that, and they would see that as, you know, as a insidious and, you know, overreaching act of, you know, of a city council.
I appreciate what you're saying, but we do that all the time. We just got through spending, I don't know how much time, talking about the way a sign's going to look. I mean, we regulate minutia all the time. I've got to pull my trash can back in my yard by Saturday morning, or I get a citation. We do this all the time, this is part of what we do. I don't think it's in any way overreach. I think it's, it's part of what makes a good city. Again, I'm delighted that we're having this conversation, because I think it's an important conversation. If we can come to some agreement on the way to make it happen, that would be even better.
Well, I think part of our disagreement is that we don't think that one of us, one group of us thinks it shouldn't happen, and another, and you believe it should, and so, I don't know how you'd find a compromise in execution if we haven't yet to agree that any part of it should happen.
So, if I'm hearing you correctly, it's just fine to have one-use, single-use plastic cups made of petroleum product that go to a landfill and stay there forever while emitting fossil fuels, and also possibly toxins into the, you know, not only into the environment, perhaps into the bodies of people using them.
That's definitely not how it was stated.
Yeah, I don't recall saying any of those words at all.
But that is the effect, that's the effect.
I think, I think the right compromise here would be, as, you know, private citizens and people in leadership, a person in leadership that seems to have, you know, an interest in it, possibly working with, like, Love a Sea Turtle, maybe to work with the private sector to educate them on the options that are out there for cost savings, apparently, and the ability to use compostable cups, and going out and educating, you know, there's not a very big list of businesses that are participating in this, and going out and educating them on the options, and hoping that they, you know, take advantage of it.
Well, I guess if that's where we are, then that's where we are.
That's enough, let's go to what we would have.
All right, there we go.
So, may I just confirm, I hear the council is expressing concern, or a desire to convert our two social districts into one, and a desire to change the hours of operation